Good evening and welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of East Providence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 7, 2020. For those of you who don't have a flag at home, we have a flag here at the council chambers. I'm going to ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. My name is Robert Britto. For those of you at home, you can't see me, however, through our access TV, I am being filmed for public record. So, Madam Clerk, may we start with a roll call vote of who we have here this evening?
Yes, Council President. Council President Britto.
Here.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Here.
Councilwoman Souza is absent. Councilman Cahoon. And Councilman Morado.
Here.
All right, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk. So, just for the record, before we go on any further, this meeting is not for public comment at this point in time. We're hoping to have and be able to share that for the future, but right now, we have to move along with essential business. And with that being said, there is nothing on this council docket for public comment. So, moving right along, next item, please.
The next item of business is Extension of Executive Orders Supplemental Declaration, and this is for the executive order by the mayor, number 2020-004, expiring April 17, 2020.
So, on the new business, Extension of Executive Order, Motion to amend the Agenda, pursuant to Rhode Island General Assembly Law, legislation 42-46-6B. The Chair will entertain a motion to add executive order 2020-015, extending the municipal state of emergency to May 8. We do have a motion on the floor by Councilman Rodrick. Would anyone like to second that motion? Can anyone, can you hear me at this time?
Can anybody hear?
I can hear Robert.
I'm not hearing.
So, currently as it stands, council, there is a motion made by Council Vice President Rodrick for the extension of the orders from April 17, extended to May 8, 2020.
So, the 2020-015 will extend the prior order. So, I'll just read it off first, pursuant to Rhode Island General Assembly Law, legislation The Chair will entertain a motion to add executive order 2020-015, extending the municipal state of emergency to May 8. We do have a motion on the floor by Councilman Rodrick. Would anyone like to second that motion? Can anyone, can you hear me at this time?
Can anybody hear?
I can hear Robert.
I'm not hearing.
So, currently as it stands, council, there is a motion made by Council Vice President Rodrick for the extension of the orders from April 17, extended to May 8, 2020. Council Vice President Rodrick made the motion to add to the agenda. And now, we are looking for a second.
I'll second.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Rodrick, seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Council President. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
I think we may have lost him.
Okay. And Council President Britto.
Aye. So, a motion was made and passed at this point in time. That was the first of three motions here. First one was to add to the agenda, the second one's to allow the vote for the first motion. Okay? The Chair will now accept the motion to permit a vote on executive order 20-
I vote aye, I wasn't called, but I vote aye.
Oh, I apologize, Council Vice President.
No problem.
The Chair will now accept the motion to permit a vote on executive order 2020-015 because of an unexpected occurrence that requires immediate action, that occurrence being governor's recent continuation of the Rhode Island State Emergency until May 8, 2020. Would anyone like to make a motion? You want to repeat that? I don't think they can hear me.
Mike, would you mind repeating it?
All council members, on the floor, I don't know if you're having difficulty hearing the Council President, is a motion to allow a vote on the item that was just added to the agenda because of an unexpected emergency, that being the governor's recent extension of the Declaration of State of Pandemic Emergency to expire on May 8. So, this motion will now allow you to vote on the item that you just added. So, this is a motion to allow a vote on the item that you just added. So moved. Second.
So, it was a motion to approve by Councilman Cahoon and seconded by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Our third and final vote. The Chair will now accept the motion to ratify the executive order 2020-015, which extends the previous executive order 2020-14, excuse me, 2020-04, until May 8. Would anyone like to make a motion at this point in time to accept the final, to accept the final motion?
The Council President, I don't know if you could hear that, the President of the Council is asking for a motion now to approve executive order 2020-15, which extends the prior executive order of 2020-04, expiring the Declaration of State of Municipal Emergency to May 8, 2020. So moved. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
So, there was a motion made by Councilman Cahoon to approve the extension of the executive order and seconded by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, next item, please.
The next item that we have is, we have collective bargaining agreement that is review, discussion, and vote proposed memorandum of understanding between the City of East Providence and the International Brotherhood of Police Officers Local 569 regarding detective's work schedule.
Mr. Solicitor, you have, would you like to give us a synopsis on this?
I'd make a motion to approve this. It seems very applicable, especially during the time that we are going through now with first responders in the city. And it's also from my conversations with police officials and others, kind of a routine matter, so therefore, I move it to approval.
Thank you, Councilman. However, before we proceed with a vote at this point in time, I'm going to ask the city solicitor to give us a reading on the writing, just so the public is fully aware of what we're voting on.
Thank you. Just so the public knows, this is a memorandum of understanding that was presented to us by the police community. It's basically-
Can they hear me from that?
-work schedule of protecting tenants, the current schedule to a five-day, non-duties off schedule. This has been approved by the police community already, has the support of the police chief, and because we're running the current contract which does set the schedule, we're asking the council's replication of this memorandum.
So, currently, I'm sorry-
Go ahead, sir.
No, speak, please.
Oh, I was just going to say, we thought we had a motion to approve from Council Vice President Rodrick.
Yes, we do. Okay. So, we do have a motion on the floor, approval for, a motion for approval by Councilman Rodrick. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second of the motion from Councilman Cahoon. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman Cahoon. Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you. That concludes, that concludes the collective bargaining agreement. Next item, we're going to move right over to reports of other city officials.
Reports of other city officials. Presentations to the community about development block grant, response to proposal.
Mr. Backrack, please approach your podium.
Just for the record, I just wanted to suppose, as you know, we're modifying executive order from the governor, allowing participants of city, city and town councils to participate. Normally, that's what we're doing. And we're only supposed to be discussing essential town business. This presentation by Mr. Backrack, the best attorney, is a heading, a final headline on these federal grants. That's why we vote with his brief presentation today.
Good evening, audience and city councilors. The reason I'm making this presentation today is to give the public and yourselves plenty of time for consideration of the 2020 Community Development Block Grant that the city receives each year as an entitlement community. The amount of our award this year is $762,169. Should I turn this off?
You can run audio later. You should be able to just kill that mic.
Yeah, just go ahead and turn.
I would proceed, as you can see in front of you, there is the categories of public services, housing, public facilities, economic development, and administration. I will go through each item, but they are available for your review. But the total public services funding is total of $84,415. Total housing is $200,000. Public facilities total is $15,000, and economic development is $312,754. Administration, $150,000. These programs will result of data analysis, along with putting out requests for proposals to the general public and to the public agency, housing developers, businesses, of wider stakeholders in the community. And they send in the proposals, the requests, and we evaluate them to meet the basic parameters. So, at this point, I just want to inform everybody that this budget as it's presented today, the proposed budget, and that what I'm looking for is public comments. Public comments will run for approximately one month, and the public comments can be submitted to myself by the calling at 401-435-7536. Or you can mail it to the City Hall, Attention Community Development, at 145-452-0229. So, that really concludes my presentation. If any city councilors have any questions at this time, I'm happy to address them. Okay, okay. Councilman Britto?
I know this is something that's been going on for some time, and been really successful in the past, working on this, on this grant here. And it appears through what I understand, that's been ended down from, ended down from the federal government, that stimulus package, that we hopefully will be accepted, or receiving additional money issue, stimulus package. And if so, does that expand the amount of people that can buy, versus those who have bought in the past, will never be able to either get accepted or otherwise? But I guess my question is, does that expand the people who can apply this for this?
So, the stimulus funding that the city will be being provided is over $400,000, but that stimulus money is not related to the budget for programming that I'm presenting to you tonight. That stimulus is exclusive to dealing with immediate needs and programs for COVID-19. And at this point, I haven't been fully briefed on what the parameters of those funds are, but as soon as I am, I will certainly distribute that to the council. The objective of these funds is to be expeditious with them, and get them to the community as quickly as possible.
Go back, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Backrack.
Thank you, David. Thank you for walking away with my, walking away with my itinerary as well. Any questions from the council?
No questions from the council at this time. We'll move on to the next matter, Madam Clerk. Oh, we need a roll call vote for this, for that? No vote? Okay, here's a public announcement.
Public announcement.
Okay. Next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the granting of an easement to construct a temporary pool and weir system downstream of the Hunts Mills Dam Fish Ladder, sponsored by Council President Britto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Along with David taking my notes, I hope that I can get this right. So, I'm going to, I'm going to read off the resolution, a portion of the resolution, just to give you an idea of what needed to be accomplished. This is what, this work is being done in conjunction with D E M and major conserves of office. With that being said, there is no charge whatsoever for this work from the city at all walls. So, the city is not paying, D E M, or they're not paying, or major conserves, no charge to the city with this resolution. However, D E M and major conserves needs to gain access to this portion of the river, of the ten mile river. And they need to gain access to build dams and weirs. And what I mean by that, just read off our resolution here. The common of, the common of environmental management desires to acquire easements through a portion of premises for the purpose of stage material and accessing the ten mile river downstream of the Hunts Mills Dam Fish Ladder in order to construct temporary pool and weir system to adjust the flow of fish ladders to facilitate this fish passage for migrating river fish and eels. So, essentially, what they're looking to do is, they're looking at this point in time to build a weir. Right now, when fish swill on the dam, it's very difficult because of the dam that has for fish to go up in this particular area. So, we have a bunch of fish that bottle nets into one area by Hunts Mills, right behind the house there, inside the house. Bottle nets into one particular area. And what D E M is looking to do is build the dams, so this bottle net no longer is required, or, excuse me, this bottle net no longer happens for fish to be able to swim upstream without being pulled in one specific area. So, I'm asking the council for approval of this resolution for the easement, so D E M, major conserves, involve the, invite them to build these area, and they're able to swim upstream without, or into one particular area. So, I hope that's the best I can explain it to you, essentially, with my notes. And I'm just looking for a vote, pass this resolution, D E M, and then major conserves can get in to build this, and have this easement to get in to build this weir system.
We'll approve.
Do we have any questions? Do I have any questions from other council members?
None. As far as I'm concerned, it's a good environmental issue and fails in the face of other current problems right now. I would make that second.
I hope I was able to explain it, or clarify, for those who are watching, so they understand exactly what's happening in that particular area. And we're just trying to free up the fish to swim along the ten mile river without any obstacles right now. At this point in time.
So, what I hear, what I heard, we have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilman Rodrick. If I'm correct, Madam Clerk, may we proceed with a vote?
Yes, Council President. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Councilman Morado, can you hear? Raise your hand.
He can't hear. Councilman Morado, we're doing a roll call on the resolution for the Hunts Mills Fish Ladder. Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Council, Councilman Morado, can you hear?
This gives us, just so you know, gives us an opportunity for the D E M to move in immediately and stop the building of this weir system by approving this resolution. So, thank you for that. Madam Clerk, we're going to, I would like to proceed in the order that we have, introduction of ordinance, however, we know that these motions are going to be tabled for further discussion, for public awareness, and if you just want to read the public hearing, and then we'll just move it, or table it to the next meeting if necessary.
Twenty-first.
So, right now, we're going to have the introduction of ordinances, first public hearing, which will be tabled, or we would need a motion to table each and every one of these ordinance as well. Madam Clerk, would you like to proceed?
Yes. So, May 5?
So, excuse me, I'm looking to make a motion to table to May 5, from what I'm being told. First public hearing is in order as amendment chapter 19 of the revised ordinance of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended title, sponsored by Councilman Morado, and Council Vice President Rodrick. First, I want to ask you to make a motion to table to May 5 meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we table this zone of ordinance until the May 5, that's May 5, 2020, city council meeting.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
So, we have a motion by Councilman Rodrick to table this discussion until May 5, seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
It appears that he's still having technical difficulties at this point in time.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Thank you. Next ordinance, second passage of public hearing, amendment of chapter 18 of the revised ordinance of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended title, vehicles and traffic, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza. Unfortunately, Councilwoman Souza, due to the nature of her work as being a nurse, she's not able to make the season's meeting. We were sure, excuse me, we were sure, at this point in time, being a first responder as a nurse in a hospital. So, I would like to make a motion at this point in time, for someone to make a motion at this point in time, for this ordinance to be tabled until the May 5 meeting.
So moved. Second.
So, we have a motion by Councilman Cahoon, seconded by Councilman Rodrick. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Oh, we haven't got, thank you.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Next ordinance, ordinance in amendment of chapter 18 of revised ordinance of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Vehicle Traffic, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza. Again, motion to table to May 5. Would anyone like to make a motion on this? You have a motion by Councilman Cahoon? Do I have a second?
So, I'll second that. I was waiting for Councilman Morado to get him involved. I see two of them. I hope he only votes once. Listen, let's just go with what we have right now.
Well, you got your bad thing, that's good enough. I'll take the two, I'll take the two at this point in time. At least we got your voice, man.
So, Madam Clerk, I would defer to Councilman Morado to let him second that.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Councilman Cahoon, seconded by Councilman Morado. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Moving right along, next ordinance. In order to amend the chapter 18 of the revised ordinance of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Administration, sponsored by Councilman Morado. Would anyone like to make a motion?
To table this until the May 5 meeting. So moved.
And who was that from?
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Rodrick. Anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
We got it seconded by Councilman Morado. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Moving right along, next ordinance, in order to amend the City of East Providence, appropriating 75,000 miles for support on the Freedom Park, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
Mr. Solicitor, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Souza that she would like to withdraw this ordinance at this time.
So, do we need to vote?
Or is it just a withdrawal? Should we just withdraw?
Okay. So, what is, what is being withdrawn at this point in time, directed by the Councilwoman? Does not require a vote?
Move right along. Council President, I just want to make a point for the record, the reason why we just tabled all the other ordinances that were on the agenda for second passages is because, obviously, under these circumstances, we are-
is because, obviously, under the circumstances we are under, it didn't really make sense to have public comment under this modified schedule. So we're hoping by May 5, we'll have an opportunity for actually, for the public to comment. And it was also understanding that the business that was on the agenda was not essential to the operation of the government. So as a mandate, a partial table, everything to the next May 5 meeting.
Very good, Mr. Solicitor, and thank you for that update. With that being said, you know, I apologize for some of the technical difficulty that we're experiencing at this point in time, however, we want to be as transparent as possible with this council meeting. With that being said, allowing, you know, the public viewers via Zoom, and in addition to that, for second means of having Fred here filming the meeting as well. Unfortunately, public comment is not suggested at this point in time due to the nature of what we're all experiencing. However, we will definitely give the public an opportunity to speak in one fashion or the other, regarding all, most, if not all of these. If it's public comment coming in here, we'll give the public an opportunity to speak something out of any ordinance resolution or otherwise. We just saw that it was necessary and important for those items to get through that are undocumented today, and those that are not essential. It was just important, however, table these to a future date. Right now, that date is scheduled for May 5 for further discussion and public comment. With that being said, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is adjourned.
So before we adjourn, thank you all for being here. Thank you all for working so hard and tirelessly over the weekend to try to accomplish this for the public. I want to just thank everyone and ask everyone to be safe going forward. We're in some crazy times here, not only in the City of East Providence, not only the state of Rhode Island, and not only the country, but internationally. Hopefully, we'll get over soon as, as for those who are sick or speedy recovery, and for those who are not, as practiced on common sense and use our mass healthcare to do all the necessary things to prevent the virus spreading any further than what it is. So on that note, I want to ask for a motion for adjournment at this point in time, if any other council members would like to say anything prior to adjournment.
Yeah, I'll just make one comment, just so everybody knows. This is not as simple as having a meeting at your desktop or anything that you might be doing at work. This is an opportunity to fold in the Open Meetings Act and get the public involved, and keep the public apprised of what we're doing. So what you're looking at is version 1.0. You'll see version 2.0 next meeting. Hopefully, there won't be too many more after that. We'll be out regularly. So again, I want to second what Council President Brito said. Thank you very much for everybody who tried very hard to get this thing to, in its place. We know it's challenging. We appreciate it. Oh, with that, I'm good.
Thank you, Councilman Kahoon.
Any other council person, prior to us making a motion to adjourn, I'd like to speak their piece. I would just echo that, say, well said, Nate. And let's have some good health and good luck to everyone. Thank you to Samantha Burnett, clerk, mayor, IT people, Jerry Gilmore, Mike Marcello, everyone helped to put this together. And I'm sure next time, it'll, it'll be a little smoother. But it wasn't that. With that, unless Ricardo has something to say, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Councilman Morado.
Thank you, Councilman Morado. Councilman Morado, repeat, I agree with everything that Sir Rodrick said, Councilman could have said, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morado.
Thank you, Councilman Morado. That being said, anyone like to make a motion? To adjourn at this point in time? I didn't hear if somebody did. Sure, I did. I can repeat that motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Morado.
Thank you, Councilman Morado. We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Morado. Anyone like to second that motion?
Second. Second. Second.
We have a second.
I just did a second, that's all, I'm sorry.
We have a second to adjourn at this point in time. Roll call, vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you all for being patient with us out here.
Thank you for being patient with us out here.
Stay safe, stay healthy.